I will let you start.
The county commissioner, if you have a word, please join us for a class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. We will begin with the minutes of our previous meeting, November 6th.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the minutes of our November 6th meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Did you see the special session also?
Oh, the special session, I forgot about it.
We approve the special session also.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the minutes of the special session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes for that one. Thank you. Not many people here today, so first up will be Wade Walling from EMA.
I have a couple of things here. One, our radio antenna on at the animal shelter, mine, I believe the sheriff's department, carnival fire, Bentonville's are all leaning. So we tried to hire a vendor to go up and straighten them, but the owners of the towers will not let our vendors on. So I've been searching for the contract and I finally ran the contract down. I'm waiting on them to deliver it to me. But it said that when that tower was sold to SBA, that Fayette County had the option to purchase it back or have first priority. I'm not sure that that happened, but we need to have a conversation of what we want to do if they're not going to let our vendors on that tower to work on our radios. This affects all of public safety, not just my department and Fayette County. If we can't fix them and one of those antennas falls due to high winds and damages somebody else's equipment, I want to make sure that we're covered and we're not liable for that if they're not going to let us up there to fix it. And then we may need to have a deeper conversation about what we want to do with them having the tower up there on our property, especially if they're not going to give us access to our antennas. So we can push this off and Dale and I can meet, go over it a little more in depth, but I wanted to make you all aware of what's going on with that. And I'm not sure why, but Scott Jones is the one that hired the vendor to go up and they said they couldn't go up the tower, so it's an issue.
When are you going to have a hard copy of that?
As soon as Chad Rittberger brings it to me. He said he'd try to have two by the end of this week.
Okay.
It took some digging to find that thing. It really was, I went through email after email back all the way to like 2012, trying to find information on that. Jane searched for it too. It just wasn't nowhere to be found and Chad pulled it up.
Well, good for him.
Yeah, I'm tickled to death already.
Do you remember what year that contract was made?
I don't. I want to say it's 2014, but don't quote me on that, I may be wrong. It may have been 2013. I think Alan Dimkovic was the county attorney at the time. Does that sound about right?
Yes. Well, we have to be able to service our antennas.
Yeah, yes.
I get probably two or three inquiries a year from companies in other states wanting to buy that. And I wasn't involved in the transfer of ownership of back then.
Right.
So I don't have any recollection about that.
From what Chad tells me in the contract, it said the county had the first option to purchase it back when they sold it to ERS who originally bought it. If that didn't happen, you know, we need to probably talk with Jeff about that and see what we can do about it as a county. And if it did happen, what we can do about them being on our property if they're not going to give us access. And it'd just probably be a leverage tool to force them to give us access, so.
Who'd you say has it now? SBA?
It's called SBA. And don't ask me what that stands for. It's some global, they own antennas all over the United States. It's a big corporation, so. And I reached out to them to try to talk to them and no response, so. So that covers that topic. The other topic I wanted to talk about, the grant for the, the brick grant for the weather station up in the animal shelter. So Department of Homeland Security reached back out to me and they sent me a letter that we need to continue forward with this grant. We have to have a reconnaissance survey done, an archaeology, archaeology survey. I'm not familiar with those, I've never had to do one. It's just another hoop that seems like they're pushing us to jump through. And we're talking about $30,000. It's not a significant amount of money in FEMA's pocketbook, but every time we agree to their new terms, they change something. So I wanted to come to the commissioners and ask them, you know, what you all would like to do with this. We can run down the information and see how much this is going to cost us, but it will cost to have an archaeological survey completed, which adds to the cost Fayette County is going to incur for this weather station.
Well, now that's right up Dick Robertson's alley, I'll bet you. How big was that concrete pad, about four foot to four foot?
It'd be probably less than that, just big enough to hold a tower. Yeah, there's going to be two of them.
Archaeological survey is actually looking for artifacts, any historical artifacts that might be in the area. And you have to do an archaeological survey even on some bridge projects that you're doing, certain bridge pocket in a certain area. And they go through and they, they got these maps that they have to look at and determine, make sure there's nothing there and so forth. They're not cheap, they're not cheap, they can do, yeah. You want to give me the information, I can get a price for you from us, have you, see what our price would be to get done. If you want to give me the information, I'll give it to the office and see if they can get your price for it.
That would be interesting to know, if you all want to pursue it, I mean, it's...
Well, they're telling you, you're right, they're telling you you got to have it.
Right, yeah. To get, before you can build. Right.
They're not going to let you build it until you've got that survey.
Right. FEMA won't approve the grant until we have the survey. So that's, that's why I'm wondering, it would be lovely to have that, I mean, it would really, but maybe we approach that from a different angle, maybe later on and try to do it where we include costs like this that, I mean, there's been three times they've asked me for an adjustment that we've had to make concessions on and to me, it's just not worth jumping through all these hoops after the fact where they won't let us change the amount of money we're requesting. So it's my opinion that we just tell IDHS, we're going to back out of this grant proposal and we'll try that at a different, a different time when we have more of our ducks in a row, so.
Things may change.
Yeah, right. Plus, on top of that, the prices for the equipment keeps going up with inflation, so what we quoted six months ago is not going to be the price that we're going to have to pay for the, the tower and all the technological pieces of it.
Well, if you could share your, that information with Dick there and let him check and see what it would cost us. I mean, if we wasn't asking them for a grant, we could go up there and build a 40 to 60 building on that spot and with...
Nobody would say we're...
No requirements at all.
Right.
But this is...
Federal government.
Your federal government, taxpayer dollars at work.
Yeah. So I'll let you have this document here and then I'll write my phone number on the back of it, so you can reach out when you have a chance to review it. So, yeah, we can table that and...
It wouldn't take over a couple of shovels full of dirt to determine whether there's anything there or not in the spot, no better than that.
Especially where we're putting it, right behind the fence where the dogs run.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't think it would be that. It is what it is, right?
Yeah. Well, you won't wait to pursue that, see what it would cost. We can always say no later.
Right, yeah, yeah, we're not the help of anything right now, so they're actually waiting for me to get through this meeting to let them know what direction we want to go, so.
And I'm sure it has to be done by somebody who's certified in that, in that particular specialty, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Yeah, it's not looking good and I was super excited about this too. That would have been an awesome piece of equipment to have, but I mean, I don't want us to keep going in the hole and them not raising their money.
You would think that somebody at Purdue has somebody on staff there who has certifications to come and do something like that.
Yeah.
At no charge.
Yeah, well, I've talked with Beth Hall from Purdue, the state climatology officer. She's, she's like, well, this is something the county needs to handle, we can't, we can't do that for you, so.
Well, okay.
My final little thing here, and I'm sorry I'm taking up so much time, AEDs. I sent Dale kind of an estimate on what it would cost to replace the batteries, the pads and get AEDs in the buildings that we need them, like Corrections, the animal shelter needs one. I'm not sure if I included the jail on that or not, but I know the annex needs a couple, especially with having probation right there. I just wanted to know, is this something that you guys want me to pursue there? If we go with a refurbished type of AED, they're still certified and the ones I'm looking at would work with EMSs, so we're not removing the pads if we have a patient that can come in directly, hook up to our pads. But it's, it's still not cheap even refurbished. I think we're looking at, what did I say, roughly around $11,000 to do them.
We have the one out here.
Right.
Is that the only one on the county building?
No, so I know there's one in my office for the annex. There should be one in the basement in the health department and there should be one upstairs. Ideally, there'd be two on every floor, one on each hall. But between, if, if we just changed the batteries and the pads, they still wouldn't work with the EMSs, so they'd be tearing them off when they come and replacing them. And Dale probably could tell you best on what that would entail. But if we just replaced the pads and the batteries, we're still looking at around $5,070, so.
To replace the pads and batteries and the ones that we have?
Yeah.
And that's a total of how many?
Yeah, I think we have six total. So there's one in Corrections and I'm pretty sure there's one in Sheriff's Department. And they're all old, I mean, I just tested mine and as soon as I hooked them up, the first thing it says is pads expired. Batteries, you know, they need replaced every five years or so and we've had these longer than that, so.
This is your area of expertise, what do you think about this?
Personally, if we're going to do it, my opinion is, is to upgrade to what matches the EMS. It would save a lot of time, a lot of trouble, but you have to tear off one set of pads, tear open another set, put it back on, and you're just going to waste time. But my opinion would be to go, if we can come up with money, to go with the refurbishment. Are those life packs?
They're, let me see, I want to make sure I'm telling you the right one on this. They are, they're a, they're a type of a life pack. I think it's Defit Tech, Lifeline, no, Physio Control Life Pack, that's what it is.
Yep.
But, and they're on sale right now, is the reason you're getting this information now. I've been kind of watching, see who has sale. Right now with it coming up on Black Friday, everybody's putting their stuff on sale, so the price will go up if we wait too much longer, I'm sure, so. But I'm not one to rush you guys into a decision either, I want you to weigh it out and what you really want to do.
The money for this, would it be on EMA?
Yeah, I don't have it, my budget.
It would be on our building, right?
Right.
Well, if we just, if we upgraded the ones that we have now...
We could probably cut that bill down to around eight, eight thousand, maybe seven something, just replacing the ones that we currently have.
We're going to have to get one for the new building.
That's right.
We'll have to have a recent one back.
And my account, I accounted for that. So, yeah, because I'm requesting 10 with this and that is, including that, so.
To tell you the truth, I don't remember if one of those was included in our, in the plan.
I don't remember.
It could be, there's already one in the blueprint and I just haven't heard anybody mention it.
I don't know, I don't remember.
Well, that's something we'll need to check into.
How long is your sales report?
Well, I'm assuming it'll probably go till Black Friday, this is my guess, so. Hopefully they might go a little after Black Friday, like I think they have a tech day or something like that on that Saturday following, so maybe we can push it out for a couple weeks yet, but I don't want to wait too long with it being on sale to do it, if we're going to, so.
You might make contact with Clint, get the physio salesman and see what he can put together for you.
I've already done that, talked to him, the striker dealer, yeah, he's quite a bit more expensive. I've got a quote for those and they were probably almost $3,000 apiece, so I think his name was Zach Jordan, was the salesman, yeah. That's all I have.
Sounds like it'd be good to have it, we need it, so, or you guys will figure out, right, if we need it at the, so we know the exact number. Are you guys feeling any towards us having it?
I think they're, they're willing to.
So do we want to...
If you have an incident...
Yeah, we could be in trouble for not working.
A lifesaver.
I mean, yeah, we don't want someone to die here.
Where can we get the financing from?
You'd have to come out of our budget somewhere.
Do we have it in our budget, Jane?
Getting toward the end of the year, it's going to start getting skimpy.
I bet it's very true.
How long will we approve it, as long as we can get the financing?
I'll second that.
Okay, how many are you approving?
Your request was 10?
That's why I requested, yeah.
Okay. Now, we got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the purchase of up to 10 AEDs, provided we have funding. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes.
Right, I didn't have that on the agenda, I apologize, I just wanted to talk to you all about it, but I'll get to work on it and see what we can get done, so.
Let us know what, what this all comes to. And I'll, I'll check over at the women's facility and see if one was included as standard equipment over there, because I can't, I can't imagine them being as precise as they are about stuff, not including a line in the place.
I would think we should do that.
And if they did include it, make sure that they've got one that will mesh with EMSs, that's the main, one of the main things we need, so that we're not wasting time pulling pads off and trying to readjust, so. They really do need to work with EMSs stuff, so when they pick their patients up, they're not fiddling around with replacing pads, so.
Yeah, what's the normal life cycle for those things?
About five years.
Okay, well, it's been, it's been longer than that, I know, since we put this one out here.
Right. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. County surveyor, Bill Mackey, do you have anything to that?
I have anything to that.
Anybody got anything for Bill?
I don't.
County attorney, do you have anything?
Nope, I'm hoping for the quickest meeting in history.
Okay.
Until I get a trial date.
Okay. Okay, Stephanie McCravy, you're here for, are you representing Extension or Purdue?
Well, a little bit of both, right? So I'm representing Purdue Extension. As you guys know, Heather departed our area earlier this, this year, but she presented to you guys the contractual services during the budget hearings. And so this is just the contract to be signed to approve our services for Fayette County. We had a pretty great year last year, we had 450 4Hers, we had a successful fair with over 2,500 projects that the 4Hers presented at the fair. As the Health and Human Sciences educator, I presented over 70 programs to Fayette County, Wayne County, Union County, and Randolph County. And Heather, I know, also presented well over 50 programs as well, so our impact is large and we've worked really hard to kind of provide, meet the needs of Fayette County and the little bit beyond. So I'm just asking for a signature today.
How many were you just, what did you say?
450. And this is the services for calendar year January 1st through December 31st of 2025.
We only do this once a year and it's easy for me to forget.
Dale brought a question too, I didn't know, I can't remember, that council has already approved on the budget list, okay, so it has been, so that's good. Make the motion to approve the contractual agreement with Purdue Extension and Fayette County?
Here we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the contract between county extension office and Purdue University for services for calendar year 2025 in the amount of $51,940. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. And you want, this only costs for one signature. You want to take this with you, right?
Sure. Or I can come pick it up later.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get a tee later.
Yep, and you guys can all three sign it if you want to.
All right, well, we'll take care of that before we leave here then.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I guess I should also say, we are hoping to have somebody in place for Heather's job middle of January, 1st of February. They're hoping to post it this week and we're currently interviewing for our office manager position since Nia left at the end of October, so. Do you post on that as well?
Well, hopefully you can get those positions filled pretty soon.
I hope so too, I've been pretty busy.
Yeah, I'll bet.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any mail you need to share today? You got any old business? Can you give us a report on Bridge 75 progress?
Concrete's been poured, it's setting, has to set for at least till Friday and then we have done a little bit of backfilling around it, opened the creek back up so water can move through it. It has water running through the creek and hopefully first to next week, we'll cut the approach and get it ready to start refilling.
Okay. We possibly have that road open by the end of the month?
I'm planning on it, yes.
Okay.
Father, mother nature lets us.
Yeah.
So does the neighborhood out there.
Yeah, I'll bet. Okay. All right then. Now, I got a, I got a quote just a while ago out of the mailbox in there from Chad Friend on the replacing that water line over there at the women's facility. Do you know that Jeff Mender from down at Myland, he was here and looked at it? Was he going to give you a quote or...
I hadn't heard from him, I thought maybe he had got back with you.
No, I haven't heard from him since he was here the other day and looked at it.
Okay, I'll try to get hold of him sometime.
So we've got, we've got, well, actually three quotes on that job right now, we'll need to, we don't want to hold the whole project up over that. We can check with Jeff and see if he's going to give us something, if not, we'll just go with what we got. All right. Any other old business? Is there any patron concerns today? Ma'am, do you have anything?
Actually, I do have one thing I'll share with you that I just thought of. I just got these today. I apologize for coming in late on suppression from Indianapolis. I've got just our Indiana Farm Bureau's legislative priorities for the year, mainly taxation and water issues. Just a few. Can you hold on that? I didn't see Jeff there. It's just FYI for your issue.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Anyone else? All that leaves is claims and payroll.
Can you, can we call, I'll see if I can get hold of Jeff, so if he's not going to bid on it, we can go ahead and get it took care of today? Do you want to do that?
Can if you like.
So up to you guys. I can step out and try to get hold of you if you want me to.
Okay, I'll tell you what we'll do. Somebody moved to recess, see if you can reach that guy and then we'll reconvene them.
I'm going to recess for up to five minutes.
I'll take a pill.
Get back with us.
Okay, we got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to recess this meeting.
We've never recessed.
And see if he can reach a contractor that we're waiting on a bid from to replace water line. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. We'll re-stand recess for at least five minutes. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order and the potential bidder that Dale was going to try to contact is not answering his phone, so we don't have a bid from him right today, but we do have three, three quotes for this job to consider today. So you've had a quick chance to look those over. Do you have a preference?
I'll move a motion if we go with Friendly Contracting, they're the lowest bid.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the contract agreement between county and Friendly Contracting to replace a six inch water main at the women's County and Friendly Contracting to replace a six-inch water main at the women's correctional facility. All in favor, signify the say a aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. We'll let him know, and then he can get to work on that as soon as possible. Is there anything else on this agenda you want to take care of today?
Babe Wilson.
Second that.
Hey, we have a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to play can, claims and payroll. All in favor, signify the say a aye. Three ayes. That concludes our agenda for today. We forgetting anything?
Hope not.
Forgetting anything, Jane?
Jane, adjourn.
Got a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. We adjourned, thank you all very much.